All right, go ahead, Lyle, for the slide.
The webinar is now broadcasting, it says, we're recording. Let me check just another couple of things here to see if we're getting public. Looks like we do have some attendees, so. Welcome, we'll give you a turn in just a minute, and we'll have a couple more joining. They look like those familiar with the application on our agenda this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here real fast, Mr. Chair. With the presentation. And with that, I'll welcome you to. Commence the meeting as you're ready.
Great, okay. Welcome all, we welcome you as. Attending, I guess, so to speak, our Kaseville City Planning Commission meeting for April 23rd. I am the Chair, Will Summercorn, I can see and I understand that my video is not coming across and. It's unusual because my laptop shows that my camera is on and in use. And things are working fine and yet I see no video of myself. And apparently neither does anybody else, so. I'm going to proceed with it the way it is and then hopefully try to get a technical fix on this before we have our next meeting. And see why that is, why I'm not able to. To broadcast with a video on this laptop. But be that as it may, this is our second meeting that we've done via Zoom. A little bit unusual for what most of us are used to and what we've done in the past and with that. Lyle, I think, let me turn it to you for a minute and you can explain to those who are. Tuning in, how the meeting will work if they have questions or wish to make a comment or interact with the commission during this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so for those who are participating, there are two different types of participants. Our planning commissioners, I believe, know how to function pretty well, the way you're set up, you'll simply. Be able to unmute yourself when you would like to speak. We'll just remind you and all those who are participating that when you're not speaking, if you'll mute yourself, that helps. Generally speaking, with the sounds, we don't have background noise and things for those who are presenting. For those who are participating from the public. You should have an option, if you look down towards the bottom of your screen. To raise your hand, so at different points in the meeting, the meeting chair, Mr. Summercorn. Will ask if there are any public comments. You will then click and raise your hand, you may have to wait a minute and as he gets ready, then we will announce that we have. So many people waiting and he'll say, go ahead and let them in and then we'll announce you, okay. So and so is now live, please go ahead and speak. And the chair may direct a certain amount of time. But ultimately, we'll have some control over when, when you can speak. But feel free to raise your hand at any point and we'll let the chair know that we've got interested participants in speaking. If you're an applicant and we should recognize your name. You know, we'll, we'll recognize that accordingly, so that the chair knows who's speaking and. They give different direction to applicants versus the public as to how much time you have to present, so. I just follow his lead at the chair and. If you have any problems finding that. You can email, let me just give you an email or a fast mailbox, or excuse me. Give me my email, it's just l gibson@kazivillecity.com. If there are any problems for some reason on even raising your hand and we can help you through it, so with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Chair and we'll get this started.
Okay, thanks, Lyle. Any other questions or comments from any of the commission members or anybody who may be listening before we begin? Wait for a minute, see if there's anything there. All right, if not, then let's go ahead, we'll begin our meeting. Our first agenda item this evening is the approval of the minutes from the April 9th, 2020 meeting. Commission members, those of you who were in attendance, I'm hoping that you've all had a chance to look those over. See if there's anything that needs to be modified or changed. If not. Then we, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make motion to approve.
That was.
Commissioner Lyon.
Steve Lyon, is there a second to that?
Quan, I'll second.
Second by Jared, any other discussion to that by the commission members? Let's just do this as a group vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 And is there anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, the minutes will stand approved, all right, thank you. Our first agenda item is a conditional use permit for a development sign for the Whisper Hollow subdivision at 650 East 100 North. The applicant is Craig Larson, we will turn first to the staff for their report.
Um. This may be. Last one. Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, aye Dan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Is a conditional use permit for a development sign. At 650 East 100 North. It's a R18 zone. That's right on top of the first north. Dead end straight there. Craig Larson is the applicant. They've started their subdivision up there. They anticipate that it's going to take at least a year to. Get the lots and develop and sell, so they're asking for a development sign. They're asking that it be the standard size allowed is a four by eight sheet of plywood, so it's 32 square feet. Under 12 feet tall. It's going to be out of the way of any pedestrian traffic, traffic. Should not be obstructed views or anything by the sign placement. That's kind of a mock-up. There's the site plan right there, it's just going to go in front of the detention basin, the street will be that the development will be that way. It should be out of everybody's way. I'm staff sees a. No problem with with vehicular traffic personnel, pedestrians. So we're recommending that the sign be allowed for one year or until all the slots are sold, whichever comes first. And. We're just. Staff recommends that.
Okay. Great, thank you, Dan, any questions from the commission of the staff of Dan? Okay, hearing no questions, let's turn then to the applicant. If the applicant is here, Craig Larson. Mr. Larson, are you here and do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, Mr. Larson is here, he's raised his hand, so. Mr. Larson and Craig, I have you live now, you're free to speak.
I believe I'm unmuted now, this is Craig Larson.
Yes.
And covered it well, we'd like to get the sign up so we can. Honestly, our intent is to. Move things along just as quickly as we can to button things up and get a nice little continuation of the neighborhood there, so. This is, is part of that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Larson, do the commission members have any questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Are there any comments from any of, any of the public who may be participating in the meeting? Questions or comments from the public on this?
So far, Mr. Chair, I don't see any other hands raised that are interested in comment on this item.
Okay. And if there are no further comments, then let's go ahead and come back to the commission. Commissioners, any other? Comments or questions about this application? About this proposal? If not, I will entertain a motion.
This is Quan.
Go ahead, Quan.
I will make a motion to approve conditional use permit for a development sign for. Applicant Craig Larson at 650 East 100 North. Per the staff's recommendation.
So with the one period, a one-year period or until all of the lots are sold?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
And that is by?
Jared.
Jared, okay, Jared has seconded that motion, any other discussion by the commission? Okay, then let's. Go ahead and vote, let's begin with Toby.
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Quan?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
And I vote aye, is that all of us? Think I got us all, all that are on there, okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. And. Thanks to the applicant as well and Mr. Larson, and we wish you good luck. All right, our next item on the agenda. Is a public hearing to consider a PRUD overlay zone and a development agreement for a common open space subdivision. Consisting of approximately 23 acres at 1300 East 1084 North. The zoning is an R18 zoning, the applicant is Morton Development Group. And the property is on the, just for those who may. Not be sure, the property is on the east side of Highway 89. Just above Crest, near Crestwood Road here in Kaseville. Let's turn to the staff for their report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, so you've introduced the item well and also skip right past that text again. And just to reaffirm the location as you demonstrated, due east of Crestwood Road off of 89. And we have approximately 23 acres of land was recently rezoned. Following your recommendation as a planning commission by the city council to the R18 zoning district. So that kind of set the stage for the single-family density approximation that we would anticipate. With the city council and with the agreement of the developer, they've set a limitation on the number of total units. Eighty-two on the property. And so with that, the developers gone back as they've been learning more and more about the property and the specifics there. And where they've put together a concept. And are asking for the PRUD, UD zone to allow for some flexibility on how their lots are configured. I'll show that here brief with this concept plan, so. With the PRUD, they would be capable of doing private streets. So private street generally is. Can be, can be different than a public street in our typical standards for residential area. Generally, they're smaller and we'll show that with the cross-section that they've proposed. The benefit to the city is the private street is built on and maintained by the homeowners of this, so there would be a homeowners association set up to take care of those streets. As well as the common open space in this particular subdivision, so. With the use of common open space, it allows them. Within the total number of units that they're allowed and the density allotted by the R18 zone. To have some flexibility on those lots and how they lay out. In a typical R18 lot would be 8,000 square feet in size. With a very standard frontage. Going from the memory here, but I believe it's 65-foot frontage lot in the R18 zone is typical. So with the PRUD and the specifics and the concept plan and development agreement, they could ask for some flexibility in that, so some lots may be larger than 8,000, others may be smaller. They've got these open spaces, so again, your total number of housing is not going to go up, it's just how it sits on the property to. Theoretically, make better use of the land. So you can see here, they've got two road stubs that would connect onto the frontage road. Which would be in place once all this construction mess is done with 89. So multiple accesses, no dead-end streets, it's all through connectivity. They've talked to us a little bit in the past about how some of the lots are laid out, that they're working around utilities, faults. Infrastructure such as aqueduct, I'll let the developer maybe speak further to that. And then again, you can kind of see the different colors, the different lot sizes, generally speaking, where they have larger lots up against the existing homes to the north. And to the east, so south of this, you don't see on this map, but if I go back. You'll note that it is, there are no homes there, that's part of the Kaseville Wilderness Park and it's public property. The same to the east, so that's also wilderness park, so there's kind of a service road of sorts that you can. I think you can see my mouse, if you follow right along the edge of this yellow line and continue south. Goes in there, they're proposing a trail connection through their development that would go into that, so. Serves two purposes essentially, one is to connect into the trail network and the. Of the wilderness park, but also to help provide access to a water tank that Weaver Basin was looking to put up near that area, so. Going back to. Their concept, so here you can see the idea behind the private roads. Again, a typical. City street is a 55-foot right-of-way, it's 33 feet of asphalt. And then you've got curb gutter, park strip, sidewalk outside of that asphalt. Here they're showing a 24-foot rolled curb to rolled curb cross-section. Then depending on the street, so the top one has a perimeter road that loops around the outside, has a park strip and sidewalk. The interior streets don't include the sidewalk under this proposal. And that's something that the 24 feet that we started our look from our fire chief. Means what they would expect, especially with the through connectivity in this area would work for them. Of note, when we don't have. Some of the. Park strips on both sides and as large of public utility easements. That's something the staff, we may push to get a little bit larger, so we have room for our utilities within those easements. On these properties. So we can. Maybe get that specific tonight if we need to. As we work through, we may have a more specific recommendation on distance for our city council. Probably to accommodate our power system or communications and other utilities, we may recommend that we go. Almost up to 15 feet on the public utility easement around that, so. Other than that, the item of note that we've mentioned in our staff report. That's outlined within the development agreement is. Not just the flexibility in the lot sizes, but the developer has requested to have some flexibility on the setbacks. For the properties, and so I'm going to pull that up to make sure I'm not. Getting the numbers wrong for you. But within that, under section. Two A sub three. They're looking for yards that are but the public street, which is essentially going to be that frontage road along the west edge to be 20 feet. That. Is pretty typical and would match what we would see with the standard R18 zone. I don't think any of these are going to be front yards against a public street, so those are either rear yards or. Based on this layout, a side yard, which would have a 20-foot separation anyways. The yards of butting their private streets would be 15 feet to garage or 12 feet to the front of a building. A typical front yard setback in an R18 zone is 25 feet, so that's 10 or more feet of variance from what we'd see normally. Again, the. We believe through the. Use of a development agreement, you can consider those, that kind of flexibility. 20 feet is more standard, especially to a garage, just to provide room for parking off the street, so it's not blocking a sidewalk or the street itself. But we can let developers speak to why they think those are numbers to consider. We ran this through our development review team recently and. At least from a technical standpoint, it's doable, it starts to feel tight for our utility providers. You know, when you're only 12 feet between the back of curb and a building. Then our power department in particular is concerned that they may need some more space, so. That's something to consider as you're working through this. And. The other flexibility, I guess, was the side yards, so a typical side yard is eight feet. They've requested to have five-foot side yards, so instead of 16 feet between buildings, it could be. As much, as small as 10 feet between buildings. That. Is less of an issue for any utility and other items that our staff has concern of. We regularly see five-foot side yards, sometimes they're five and eight, so you have 13 feet between buildings. But that becomes a little bit more of a aesthetic preference issue from the council, they don't have to build that close together, it just allows them the opportunity to do so, should they choose that? And I will probably close my remarks there as far as relating to that and simply say that. Again, as a PRUD and overlay action, it's a legislative decision. So this is something we're looking for a recommendation from tonight from the planning commission. You're welcome to, if you think you need additional detail before you're ready to make a decision. You can have the developer come back to you with those items. If you feel comfortable with it as it is, you can make a recommendation. But certainly you can. Request changes that be seen at the council before they head that way or are seen before you, before you are ready for it to go to towards the council, should you feel that's appropriate. And with that, I do know we have the developer and applicant with us this evening as a, as an app. What do you call it, I'm going to call it a participant and attendee of the meeting. So to remind the chair, we can listen to them for additional details and I'm happy to take any questions as well from the commission tonight.
Okay, thanks, Lyle. Commissioners, any questions of the staff before we turn to the applicant? While I do have one question, when you were talking about the utility easement in the front. In a regular subdivision, a normal subdivision, what is the width of the utility easement usually? Lyle, did you, could you hear me, did you, were you able to hear me?
If you repeat that, Mr. Chair, apologies.
Yeah, you bet, well, what's the, what's the typical width of utility easement in a regular subdivision in the city?
Normally, we'll see is 10-foot public utility easement along the front of a lot. So the, the reason it gets really tight is. On a standard public street, we'll have, you'll have the street, you'll have the park strip. Which is still part of the street technically, so that's utilities can go. And then you have the sidewalk, which no one really uses, and then beyond that, we have that additional 10 feet of public utility easement. So normally, there's about 15 feet of space for the communications and utility providers to go into. Because you can count the park strip. In addition to the public utility easement for that use. We do have. Other areas where we don't have that much space and then that can work, but that was just the, the comments that were raised is it gets tight and trickier. As we. Trink in space and that.
Okay, so is, is city staff, are they, I mean, are they willing to accept the smaller space behind the curve or were they, was that something that they were saying that they would not recommend?
Dan, so. The. I don't have a specific. Recommendation from any one of them that that will not work. We just got a little bit of, I don't want to call it gripes, but concerns that, yeah, that gets really tight, how's that going to work out, so. It'd get a little complicated and we have to rethink on exactly where everybody's going to go with that type of spacing. You know, I think that generally speaking, they're more comfortable with the. At least 15 between, before any building or any improvements are there, 20 might be more comfortable.
Okay, appreciate that, just a general comment that I've got about that, I mean. I was involved in Salt Lake City where. You have a lot of older houses and you've got houses that are, you know, I mean, you have all variation of. Distances and spacings and so on, and. A lot of the houses in particular to the older parts of Salt Lake City and even in some of the newer ones as they were developing now. Were getting fairly close to the street, fairly small yard areas. And the utility. Workers and those that worked in those easement areas. It was tighter, but they were. I guess you could say used to it, they also probably had equipment that was. Available to accommodate a little bit tighter spacing. And some of those circumstances, so while it may not be as comfortable as what we've had in the past, it is possible. It's certainly something that can be done and it may just need some additional equipment or some varied equipment to do that. But I guess that's really something that's up to the city staffing and city administration as to whether they would be willing to do that. They also probably had equipment that was. Available to accommodate a little bit tighter spacing and some of those. Yes, exactly, right. Okay, any other questions from the commissioners of the staff?
This is Toby, I have a question, Lyle, does this concern with the utility easement apply for all the lots? Or is there some of the lots that maybe it doesn't, it's not as much of a concern?
Yeah, so it would be just typical across the board, so where the. Well, and I. Changed that just a little bit, so because of the two different cross-sections. Again, around the perimeter, this road that has the green next to it. We've got the five-foot landscape area plus the public utility easement. So that becomes a little bit different than these interior streets. Technically, there's five feet less to work with without that park strip area. So it's, you've got two different scenarios that we're, we're looking at. One is easier than the other based on the current proposal and that's the perimeter road because it has more room to work with.
Yeah, any other questions?
I have a question, so you were saying it could possibly end up being to where the houses are. Five feet apart on each side, is that correct? So each house would be about 10 feet apart?
Yes, that's accurate, so the home is five feet from the property line, 10 feet from the next home.
Okay, and you mentioned that the fire department said that they were okay with the, the street widths, but it seems pretty close, I'm sure I've seen houses that close before, but is that? A fire hazard at all having them that close to each other?
So. I mean, that's part of the reasons for setbacks is to help with, with fire control and spread. But with five for building code, that's fine, and we'll often see buildings that go even closer, they just required to build so higher five needed. Standard if they did go any closer than that, but. Five, I think, is something that we're comfortable with. I understand it, even with the. And we've done it before.
Lyle, this is Steve, let me just interject, what about the proximity with the rural urban interface and wildfire? Is that a concern with, with such close density also?
Not that I have heard about, so we could ask that more specifically if it comes back to you or prepare that for the city council for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, just having recently had that event up there on the hillside. And then having such density, it's just always that, that rural urban interface is always an interesting place to have density like that, you, you want to spread as much as possible sometimes, it's just a concern. You just want to make sure that's being thought of before we get into this.
That's a good point that Steve raises. What, the, why, what's the rear yard setback that would be required, or I guess it could be varied under this?
Yeah, so they've not requested any variance or deviation from the typical rear and setbacks, so it's 15, that's standard for an R18 zone. The lots, they're closest to the, at least to the east, which is the wilderness park. Are the deepest and largest lots, so likely they will have larger yards and increased spacing and ability to do that. Those to the south might be a little bit tighter.
Yeah, you've got, you've got more brush there, you look at it, there's quite a bit of vegetation on the south side.
Well, you'd be looking at 15 feet. And that would just be typical of all of our R1 zoning districts.
Okay, it might just be good to, I don't know if that would be part of the requirement or just a recommendation or advice to them that they. Take a look at the wildfire protection, wildfire spacing of. Fuel, potential fuel in those rear yard areas. Okay, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Josh.
And we can address this maybe after the applicant, if, if needed, but Lyle. What is the, what is on the, on the most narrow? Public. Street improvement that is allowed under Kaseville's code, what is the most narrow? Asphalt width, meaning lip of curb to lip of curb, not back of curb, but lip to lip. Do you know?
Yeah, so I think that's. Our code's not as specific to that, if I recall correctly, but the international fire code is. And so that's where that comes from, and 24 feet is pretty much the minimal standard of hard surface to meet fire code and give them the access they, they need.
But, okay, so, but you don't know. Do, I guess, maybe, maybe I'll ask it this way, do we allow 24 feet of asphalt on any other public right-of-way in Kaseville right now?
So within a public right of way, no. So our our smallest public right of way standard is it's a 55 foot right of way. It's 35 feet back of curb to back of curb. So that's about 32 feet of asphalt roughly. So private streets, we have several that are the 24 feet. Back of curb to back of curb, and that's very common. And that's again, based on this flexibility from the private street and the PRUD. If they're plowing it, maintaining it, we'll let them do that to a different standard. It provides enough width that two cars can go both directions and gets tight, but generally one car could park on. One side of the road and still have enough space for two other cars. So. Think it's it's really tight, but an eight foot lane, you can divide that three ways. Room to parallel park and drive past each other and it's that's about all the 24 feet gets you.
Yeah, and again, we can maybe address this in a in a minute, but. I just diagrammed this out to myself so I could figure it out. But if, I mean, the standard width of a parking lot of or a parking stall, excuse me. Is nine feet. So you picture two parking stalls, that's 18 feet. That leaves six feet left. And that seems.
I don't think you could have parking on both sides in a situation like that. And typically, there are some communities that do allow. Asphalt at 24 feet or a street width of 24 feet, and they generally will only allow parking on one side if they allow any parking on the street at all.
I mean, okay, so that's the last part is is the key because to me, even if you allow parking only on one side. Then that leaves you, what's my math? I mean, that leaves you 15 feet. I think, yeah, 15 feet basically for that. And that that's not that's not a comfortable. Width for two cars to pass. You'd have to be playing like leapfrog.
You're driving two smart cars at that point and still cutting it tight. So generally, you'll do exactly as you stated, commissioners. One will slow, let the other one pass and until they get past the parked car situation. So identifying the areas where parking is allowed, if at all. Has value.
And then last question, I guess, just to clarify what I see in the I think the development agreement or. The diagram we saw, is it a is what's being proposed proposed a rolled curb or is it an a standard? A standard curb and gutter?
Yeah, the developer can maybe clarify, but to me, it looks like a rolled curb versus a high back standard curb and gutter.
And and the city doesn't care one way or the other?
No, on the private street, we allow it. We simply just require that there be curb and gutter of some fashion. And that's generally what we see in the private street developments are rolled curb.
Yeah.
Even here in Kaysville.
Yeah, okay, that's those are my questions for now.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's go to the applicant.
I see him on here. I don't see any hands raised. So I feel there we go. All right. Okay, so Dave Morton, I've got you here. You're live. You should be able to speak.
Wonderful. Can every Lyle, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Commissioner. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for. Being able to make this meeting. This is not easy for everybody. So thank you very much. This has been just an absolutely fantastic project. We're so excited about it. And we are, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as we discuss this. As as I outlined several months ago, when we were before you, this this piece of property has some very unique attributes. Along the eastern border, it has an aqueduct. It has, we've got the expansion of 89 on the western side. We also have. Some power lines on the western side. And then. We were at the time when I first met with you, we were in the process of doing a fault study and there is a a very minor fault that we have done. But one of the things as we indicated to the to the council. Is that we have taken our weaknesses and made them strengths in in how we have actually planned this community. And that that is one of the things that makes this so exciting. As you'll see, the open area. Is essentially we're taking advantage of those areas where we cannot build to create some beautiful open space. For those individuals that will be able to to live in this area. In addition. We've also created somewhat of a mixed community to allow larger lots on the eastern end. Where we've got some challenges with the aqueduct, where those will be. Third, to some of them even half acre lots. We then have our our next highest, largest lots along the northern border of the property. Where we've got our neighbors and then. At we have utilized, if you was somewhat of the contours of property to create our our street structure. And to allow a very nice community. In addition, the private roads, one of the the advantages that we have there. Is to create a certain feel to the area. We the goal here is to create a nice private feel. And part of the reason for the narrower roads is to discourage parking along the road. To really encourage individuals, you know, parking in their garages and in their driveways and that that is is the focus. So. Is to deter, if you would, a lot of parking along the streets to keep the community looking nice. We have spent quite a bit of time working with not only the Talbets, but also the neighbors in the area prior to the city council meeting. We met with, I believe, every single neighbor. To the north to understand their concerns. And we have, matter of fact. We have committed to help some of them. We've got some of those neighbors up there have some challenges. With internet access. And as we bring utilities up through here, we will plan to help where we can. With some utilities as well as being a good neighbor and making certain that. We have our our higher densities which border those neighbors right there and then. The the densities, the lot sizes to get slightly smaller, we closer to 89, which are generally the little less desirable. Lots, but still will be very, very nice homes. In addition, during the city council meeting, we actually. Gave some elevations of what some of the even the smaller 6,000 square foot lot, 5,000 square foot lot homes would look like. And you know, these homes will still sell for will still have an excellent market value. And so as we we have spent a tremendous amount of time laying this out. Understanding the needs of the city, understanding the unique nature and characteristics of the land. And understanding the concerns of the neighbors to really. Do our best to develop a really nice, a nice project in a nice community. So part of the other thing to understand is that the the setbacks are minimums. We clearly on the larger lots, the the smaller setbacks will not be used. Those smaller setbacks essentially allow us to be a little bit more flexible on some of our smaller lots. Which is generally what is where it's used. And so. As you can see, we've got multiple, probably, I think we've got a total of about four different product types, maybe five if we include the estate lots. Along the eastern border. So we have not actually, I'm glad there was a comment made specific to some of the fire concerns. And we will, we will look into that absolutely to see what concerns there may be. So. With that, I would like to again, thank staff has been great to work with. On moving this project forward as well as the commission, the council have been tremendous to work with. So what questions can I answer for you?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Morton. We appreciate that. I just have a question for you. When you mentioned the open space and you were saying. You intended that to be beautiful. What are your plans for the open space? How are you planning on improving that or what do you plan on doing there?
It's a great question. So the open space on the the farthest east will be. Very park oriented with trees, probably not include. A any type of tot park on the upper one. It will it will be landscaped so that. When the homes that are facing that with their front yards out there will have just a beautiful open space area that they can. They can use to it will be grassed. To, you know, to put a blanket on to enjoy. The trail system will be interconnected to all of our open spaces. Where we will have most likely some tot parks on some of the more western open spaces. Which will would be more consistent with some of the smaller lots. For a little bit more beginner type homes. All of the homes will be in the range of between four, the the minimum will most likely be between 400 and $500,000 from a market perspective. And then obviously, as we go far all the way to the east. There will be some, most of those lots, I think there's a seven total. Of those private lots will be done most likely by custom builders and those homes will be extremely nice. So. I hope that answers your question. So we haven't really got into the real details of exactly how the open space would. How it exactly will be laid out, but as from a conceptual perspective, we see the open space again to the east. Being lined with trees and grass and really kind of creating a really nice. Beautiful open area. And then the open space farther to the west will have some amenities. Such as tot parks, some equipment like that, which will which will be then interconnected with the trail system. So that anybody in that community will be able to utilize that. In addition, to be able to access any of the trails to the east is Lyle indicated. So there are so many wonderful things about this. About this project and we in its area, and we really want to take advantage of that to make this something that Kaysville City can be very proud of.
I appreciate that. That's that's a good explanation of it. I just. With the PRUD provision and allowing for the variation in the setbacks and the size. Of the lots and the streets and so on, and one of the provisions in there being the provision of open space. It's always a little bit of a concern to me when people propose developers will propose and saying, well. We have this open space, but we just intend on leaving it. The way it is natural and that sometimes is appropriate or works, but. Sometimes I think really in a particular situation, a lot like what you've got here, that's it's better to do some. Amenities that will be a benefit to the residents. Of that development. And that sounds like what you're planning on doing. So I think that's that's great. That's I appreciate your. Explaining that and being willing to do that.
Absolutely. And one other item, you know, the open space to the west, there there will be somewhat of an entry to the project. And so. We will want to make certain that that looks very nice as well. And so we'll utilize that. To our advantage to kind of create a much more open welcoming feeling to the community.
Great, that's good. Okay, commissioners, any other commissioners questions?
Swan have a question. Hey, Dave, thanks for being here. Just a quick question. What do you anticipate the average? Average price for these units? So it'll vary. Again, the the homes farthest to the east will probably be somewhere between 750 and some will be in excess of a million. The 10,000 square foot lots will be, you know, probably somewhere in the in the 500 to 750. And then it will move downward. I think that the smallest lots, the fives and six thousands will somewhere the starting price, a base price will be somewhere between. 375 and 425. And I'm almost embarrassed to state those numbers. It's it's somewhat sad to think that our smallest lots. Which are fairly small in comparison to the things that I was looking for when I was looking at a starter home. Are that kind of a price when I look at how are my children going to afford? You know, a home on a five or 6,000 square foot lot that that starts like that. But unfortunately, that's. A little bit of the time that we're living in. And in addition, this area is it's a very nice area and and. I think that the single family lots complement this area and it's good to have a little bit of a mix. It creates a very nice kind of a a kind of a different mixed community, which is very nice to have. I hope I answered your question. Yeah, you did. Thank you very much. Follow up questions. So if you know, what effects? Would happen if we didn't allow for this setback? I'm assuming you'd have to cut back. On the number of units, is that correct or? Well, it just depends on the setback that we would be discussing. So. Side setbacks wouldn't, you know, i- if we were to, I mean, I'm going to be very transparent because I don't have any other reason to be, but. Even the front setback, if it was a little larger. Wouldn't really probably change the number of lots. It just it puts a little bit more of a constraint on the smaller lots. So most of the larger lots are all going to be at a minimum of 100 feet deep, which is.
Okay.
Kind of a standard lot. So you're not going to really have any real small front. Setbacks or rear setbacks on a lot of that size. The only time it gets a little tight is on some of the smaller ones, but actually, some of the smaller ones are actually fairly deep still. So. To to answer your question, the the only thing that would honestly alter probably what I would be able to do is. If I had to make the road substantially wider, if that makes sense. Yes, it does. If you had to make the roads wider, could you? Make that up by shrinking the open space areas? Yeah, we might have a little bit of flexibility on that, but not too much. This the, for example, the the open space to the east. Is there because of two reasons, because of the aqueduct, too, because we've got a a fault line. And so we can't have there. The fault line is a minor fault line in there. We just can't have any building structures on it. And so. Because it kind of goes right through that area, what we've decided to do again is. Is take our weakness and make it a strength and just make it some beautiful open space. So I might be able to tuck that in a little bit, but. But that's where I would be a little bit constrained is on on the width of the roads. Okay, thank you. You bet. My pleasure.
Dave, Dave, this is Jared Doxy. I applaud what you've done on this layout. I the market is what it is, but you attempted to. Allow for different economic groups to be able to afford some of the smaller lots. And then go up from there as you get a little more elevation and the best views. But I I love what you've done with the development using the constraints of the site. And also having an opportunity for lower income families to enjoy a neighborhood like this. So I think you've done a great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Mr. Morton. We appreciate your explanations and your presentation. This is a public hearing for to allow the PRUD overlay, which is the. Very similar to a rezone or to applying a zone to a piece of property. So with that, we will open the public hearing now and. Lyle, if you can let us know if there's anyone attending the meeting or involved in the meeting. Who would like to make a comment as part of the public hearing?
Okay, so at this time, if anybody interested in speaking would raise their hand, we'll give you permission to speak. So far, I see no one. We'll give you a moment to. Do that if you're interested. Still no more, no hands, Mr. Chair, maybe another few seconds, just in case people are trying to look for it down on the bottom of your screen. There should be a raised hand option if you would like to. Say anything regarding this item to the commission. With that, Mr. Chair, I see no hands. If any pop up, I'll let you know. It looks like they may have tried to do so here in the short order, but otherwise. No hands have been raised.
All right. Well, we'll take that then as an indication that there's no one here to speak to this item. And with that, then we will close the public hearing. We'll return back. To the planning commission and staff and the applicant. For any further discussion on this. I just one comment that I've got or question, Lyle, for you and staff. I think where you look at the development agreement and this, this will have a development agreement as part of. Allowing PRUD to go forward and this will be a recommendation to the council. But I think it might be helpful to include in that development agreement. Some language that indicates that there will be what? Some language that indicates that there will be, what kinds of improvements may be made to the open space then. As part of this overall development, so that that's clear in there that it's in the development agreement that can be pointed to as saying. This was part of what was agreed to in order to allow the flexibility on street widths and lot setbacks.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, that would be appropriate. The, the beauty of the development agreement is. Can have very detailed and information regarding just about anything. And in this case, where the applicant has expressed that is their intent, if you would like to ensure that that takes place. Whether you want to see an agreement back before you that includes that language, or if you're simply comfortable passing it along with that. Possibly other suggestions for the council, we can make sure it's in there before the council sees it.
I'm fine with that understanding, and if we reflect that in the motion. But I don't, I don't necessarily feel like we need to see it again, or that I need to see it again. I, I think we would. Rely on the staff to make sure that that language, something along that, a prompt, that's appropriate would be in there.
If you have specific items that were mentioned that are particular that you would like to make sure in place. Again, we can keep it open just to say include amenities as part of the agreement, or if you want. Three hundred top lots plated in gold, whatever detail you think is appropriate. If there is something specific, please let us know. Obviously, that was facetious, but just to make a point, we can be as open or specific as you'd like before.
No, with the, with the developer explaining that they were going to put in some top lots and they were going to put in some grass area. That would allow for, you know, recreational use, picnicking, whatever. I think that would be appropriate. I think that's, that would be adequate. That would probably address it, at least as far as I'm concerned. Any others? I guess I have one more question on the easements as well. You're saying, Lyle, at this point, that the proposed easements in the front are about eight feet. Where you're saying that the minimum setbacks will wind up being fifteen feet to the garage, twelve feet to the porch. Could we expand those easements to ten feet? In the front, just to allow the public utilities folks to have a little bit more room to work with appropriately, that where they have the right to work within that.
I'll, I'll speak to that. I, I believe that would be very easy for a developer to accommodate. To allow additional easements over a yard where they can't place a building anyway, and just ensuring the right for utilities to work within that. So yeah, if you'd like to make that specific, the easements be increased. I don't know if you have any comments towards the setbacks as proposed, as we've discussed as part of that. And again, we can be as open or specific as you'd like in that recommendation to the council.
I personally don't have a problem with that setback. I think, you know, again, those will be minimums, and then they'll probably go, there'll be some variation in those, and I think having variation. In setbacks is always a good thing. As part of neighborhood design, so allowing them to go all the way to that minimum, I think is fine. I do agree that there may be a little bit of a tightness in the car parked on the driveway. With fifteen feet, it's not a lot of room, but it is enough room, I guess, for a car. Probably not a really long car, but most cars could probably fit into that.
This is Quan.
Go ahead, Quan.
When I look at this, the spirit of it, I like it, like the fact that the HOA is going to maintain the streets. So we're adding inventory to the city without adding any burden to any city services. I echo what Commissioner Doxy said about, you know, praising the developer in getting this. White demographics, obviously, we wish it was lower in price. I don't have any issues with that. As far as the setbacks, I don't have any issues with this. I think we all have heard that the. You know, when you, you've got less width. It means slower speed, and I've seen that daybreak area where, yes, I've had a pull over. I've done that during the day and night, no issues there. And I think in West Kaysville, there's a development that looks similar to this. So yeah, I, I don't have any issues with this. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions from commissioners?
My, I guess my, my one comment would be to echo what. I think Steve said, which was the fire issue. You know, I don't, I don't think, I certainly don't think our foothills are the foothills of California per se. But there is a, a fire risk the closer we get up the foothills, and this is about as close as it gets. And, and then in light of that, we are now. Narrowing. You know, setbacks in arguably probably the, if there is a risky area for fire hazard. It's here in Kaysville, so. I don't know quite what to do about that. Maybe certainly the furthest east lots, we. We have a bigger rear yard setback, but. I think maybe a- at a minimum, we. Ask the council to possibly get creative on. Some solution to address that risk.
Yeah, there are, there are some guidelines from the state, for example, about. Clear areas around buildings with the urban wildland interface. And maybe it would be well to recommend to the council that they consider including. A requirement in there, or at least a specification that for those lots that are adjacent to. The wilderness area, the wilderness park area that they, in those rear yards and those sides of budding that, that they. Apply those standards for keeping clear space for a wildfire.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, not to interrupt the discussion too much, but we did have a hand raised by one of the applicants, if you're interested in hearing from them.
Sure, yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, Keaton Morton, I've got you. Once you're unmuted, you are live and.
Okay. Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I think that we're totally, I think this is something we kind of. I always, I've actually thought about as well. The nice thing is that the, those homes, the estate lots. Towards the east, they're about a hundred and sixty-five feet deep. And that is mainly because of the aqueduct line that we have that will run along. That, so that I think will help with that, this issue. Most homes now are about a hundred feet deep, but I think that with those homes being a hundred and sixty-five feet deep, sixty-five feet deeper than a normal. Home, I think that will help with this issue, but yeah, we're open to hearing and kind of being reasonable, but. But that is an issue that I have kind of thought about, but I think that with these homes being super deep. And mainly because of the aqueduct line that runs along the front yards of that, well, it's kind of forcing us to do that. So, yeah, that just, I just wanted to point that out so you, so that you guys do know that that will help with this, is that. The, how deep that those lots are on the eastern side of the property, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or discussion? All right, if there's no other discussion on this, then I think we're ready to consider a motion. If there's anyone willing to make a motion and, and when we get that, I have a couple of points. I've kind of written down some of the points here that we've made during the discussion that I would maybe encourage the maker of the motion to include.
This is Quan. I'll make the motion to approve, to consider the. Period D overlay zone and development agreement for common open space subdivision consisting of approximately twenty-three acres at thirteen hundred east. Ten eighty-four north, along with the staff recommendations and along with the points that the commissioner has to make.
Yeah, the points that I think that would be perhaps good to consider in this would be one on the open space amenities. That there be specifics included in the development agreement about the inclusion of top lots. Open space, grass areas, recreation areas on those open spaces. We don't need to be more specific than that, I think, but just that there's an acknowledgement that those kinds of things would be. Included in the open space area that's shown in the plan. The second would be the easement width in front of those lots to expand those to at least ten feet. Or as the public utility staff may recommend on that. And the third item would be that for those lots that are adjacent to. The Kaysville Mountain Wilderness Area that in those rear yards. That they, that the council consider imposing, or at least recommending that the requirements that be followed. For the urban wildfire interface. Standards that have been established by the state for the clear areas adjacent to those wildlands. And I guess, Quan, would you be willing to include those things in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, any others from any other commissioners? Let's see if there's a second to that motion.
I'll make the second.
Steve has seconded that motion. Any other discussion? Right, well, then let's go ahead and vote on this motion to approve. Or recommend approval to the city council of a lot of applying the PRUD overlay zone. To this property with those recommendations that we've included. Start the voting with Quan. Quan?
I.
Jared?
I.
Steve?
I.
Abby?
I.
Josh?
I.
Toby?
I.
And I vote I. I think we got everyone, right? Okay, it looks like that motion passes unanimously. So, thanks very much. Lyle, any questions that you have with regard to that approval, or are we pretty good?
I think as well, so we'll work with the applicant on making those modifications and improvements to the agreement before bringing it to the council. For anybody listening. It's likely that that will be ready for city council at May the seventh, I believe is the next time that they meet. And it will be in a very similar format to this one this evening. I suspect via Zoom and YouTube live.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Mortons. We appreciate your coming and. For your explanation and for the project that you're proposing. All right. All right, our next agenda item is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending chapter seventeen dash thirty-three sign regulations. Of the city's planning and zoning regulations, revised ordinances of Kaysville City. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this came about. From a recent planning commission meeting where the commission saw multiple development signs. And we saw one here this evening and Mr. Jessup that presented that joke that this may be the last one you ever have to see. And so. I guess I don't have any exhibits for you, but essentially what we proposed in that. Originally, any new development, they like to put up the sign with lots for sale, prices starting at the. Whatever number, right? And so we'll commonly see those as subdivisions. Currently, they're required to come before the planning commission for approval. And we saw that evening and we've seen over the years that, as long as it's meeting the basic size requirements, which are outlined within the ordinance. And they're staying outside of the clear view section of the ordinance, or excuse me, not blocking traffic, staying out of the clear view triangle. Near property corners and intersections, they're being approved, so they're not things that we're seeing conditions applied to. It becomes the, basically an effort to just monitor them to make sure that they're not up when the subdivisions no longer selling items. So the proposal and the ordinance before you simply takes that from a conditional use aspect under the purview of the planning commission. And puts it into a permitted use process. We'll just read the language that's on there. It maintained the height and size requirements as were previously enacted. Up to twelve feet in height, thirty-two square feet standard, up to ninety-six feet, depending on the lot frontage. It's on the private property, and the important part is that it would be a permitted use in all zones. Allowed on property that is under development for a new subdivision or has an active building permit. And so that kind of helps bridge both the commercial development and residential larger developments. Only allowed on a residential development where there are at least three or more lots per cell. Otherwise, they just would use a standard or sell sign in the yard rather than these larger ones. And must be removed within thirty days from when one hundred percent of the units or suites are occupied. So we believe instead of every six months, bringing those back towards the planning commission to renew or extend the permit. We can just check our permit occupancy. As we go through the building permit process, and if we've given occupancy and everything, we tell the developer. Whoever's got the sign up that it's time to take that down. So with that, one other minor change of note on a different science, as we were looking at the ordinance. We recommended just a minor tweak to another sign type, which we consider a construction sign. Now, they're kind of similar. They generally advertise architect or the team that's doing something. Previously allowed for those to be twenty feet in height. We just recommended dropping that height down to twelve feet, felt that was sufficient. Hopefully less, less obtrusive. And that is the entirety of what was recommended. We're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission on this to forward to the city council. And remind you, it is a public hearing. This has been advertised as such. Give the opportunity for any public to like to speak to it as.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Appreciate that, Lyle. I, I'm very much in favor of this. Because we basically just wind up pretty much just. Cookie cutter blanket approving most of these because they meet the requirements of the ordinance, and if they meet the requirements of the ordinance, just. You know, let them go ahead. We've had this discussion before. So with that, any other comments from any of the commissioners about this before we go to the public hearing?
I'd just like to thank staff for moving on this as quickly as they have. I think this likes to bite things for us and help. Actually help citizens get stuff done faster.
Agreed, I think that's right. Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing to get comment with this being an amendment or a proposed amendment to the city's. Zoning ordinance and development code. And so with that, we'd like to open the public hearing, and if there is anyone attending or participating in this meeting that would like to comment on this. We invite you to do so now. Lyle, we'll have you check and see if there's anyone there that is looking to comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm still showing we have four people attending and participating with us. We're dwindling in numbers a little bit as the meeting's gone on, but if any of you are interested in commenting on this, please raise your hand now and we'll give you a chance to speak. I see no hands being raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn back to the commission. Commissioners, any further discussion with regard to this proposed change? And if not, then we will entertain a motion. Trying to make a comment, you just, there's a lot of static coming across and we're not hearing you.
No, you're fine. I had it. There we are. No, I'll make a motion to recommend that we pass the ordinance or for the recommendation of the ordinance. Amending chapter seventeen dash thirty-three sign regulations entitled seventeen, planning and zoning of the Rosias ordinance of Kaysville City Council.
Steve Lyon has made a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance as proposed. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Toby Barris has seconded that motion. Any other discussion by the commission? Seeing none, let's go ahead and proceed to the vote. I will vote first. I vote I. Josh?
I.
Jared?
I.
Steve?
I.
Let's see, Abby?
I.
And Quan?
I.
All right, that motion passes unanimously, and we make that recommendation on to the city council. Thanks, commissioners. I think that'll be a. That's a positive step. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing to consider another ordinance amendment. This one is to amend section seventeen dash thirty-four dash seven. The common open space subdivision provisions in the PRUD planned residentially unit development chapter of the city's planning and zoning ordinance. We'll turn to Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one is even more, as far as the ordinance has very little text change in it. It's a simple matter of a zone that we created recently, the R one six. It's a single family residential zoning district allowing six thousand square foot lot sizes is generally the way that it's written. That's about seven units an acre as far as density. When we created the zone, we simply didn't add it to the R one, or excuse me, the PRUD overlay zone as an option for consideration. So as we were looking at the period chapter for other developments, and recently we've we noticed that that was out of there and felt that was appropriate to add that tool to the toolbox. It does not mean that anyone who gets an R one six automatically gets the PRUD. But without it, you don't have the option to consider doing some of the things we were looking at tonight to look for some flexibility or variation on a a development, should anybody desire to do that in the future. And so we're simply adding the R one six text to a table of different zoning districts that adds the zone in there and simply states that the density would, like the other zones, be based upon that six thousand square foot lot size, one unit for every six thousand square feet that they have within the development. So with that, again, as mentioned with the introduction, it is a public hearing. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so while this is essentially, I guess, basically an oversight from when it was done originally, is that kind of, is that accurate to say?
I think that's fair. It's in a different section of the ordinance. So when we created the R one six, it's under a different chapter. And so we aren't always keen enough to catch every other section that might be influenced by it. So yeah, this cleans that up and allows that option.
Yeah, okay. Any comments or questions by the commission of staff? Okay, seeing none. Once again, this is a public hearing as an amendment to the city's planning and zoning ordinance. So let's go again to the participants, the public that may be participating in the meeting and see if there is anyone who would like to comment with regard to that. Lyle?
Okay, the last reminder on this, we still have a few bodies left. Again, if you are interested in sharing a comment, please raise your hand at this time and we'll give you permission to speak. Yeah, so far, Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands or interest in speaking to this item.
Okay, I think with that, given that, we will then go ahead and close the public hearing and turn back to the commission, see if there are any other questions or comments with regard to it. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
This is Toby. I'll make a motion to recommend amending the, to the city council to amend the section seventeen three thirty-four dash seven as proposed by the staff.
So a motion by Toby Barris to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to this chapter of the zoning ordinance. Is there a second to that motion?
This is Kwan. So sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, Kwan.
Go for it, Kwan.
This is Kwan. I'll second the motion.
Okay, second by Kwan. Any other discussion with regard to the motion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and proceed to a vote. Start with Kwan. Kwan, go ahead.
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Josh? Josh, I saw his mouth go aye. I didn't hear him, but I saw it. There we go. Thank you. Toby?
Aye.
And the chair, Will Summercorn, votes aye. All right. Unanimous vote once again to recommend to the council the amendment to the ordinance as proposed. Ladies and gentlemen, that takes care of our formal agenda. We now have our regular standing call to the public. If there's anyone attending or participating in this meeting that would like to make any comments to the commission, now is the time.
Let's see, Mr. Chair, I see two attendees still, so we've lost a couple more. I'll give them just a moment. If they're interested, they can select, raise their hand and welcome to make a comment to the commission. Yeah, I'm not seeing any interest in making a comment at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now we will take that as there being no one here to make any comments to the commission under the call of the public. Let's move on then to other matters, reports, correspondence and calendar by the staff.
Just briefly, so the very beginning of this meeting, for anyone who might be watching by YouTube. So we've missed a couple minutes. I think we got it fairly quick. Thanks. Someone let us know it wasn't on. When we repost this, both the audio and the video from the recording of the Zoom meeting, which is all recorded, will be available on that. So if anyone wants to watch the whole thing, we'll make sure that's shared. Other reports, I suspect we're still going to be doing this for a little while, even with some of the hopeful, anticipated relaxing of our safety and health requirements through the COVID that I suspect are likely the next month, and we'll kind of continue to play by ear. We'll be meeting in this format. And May the fourteenth is our next anticipated and scheduled meeting as a planning commission.
While you're on that, Lyle, I do have a question with that be our next meeting being May fourteenth. And Steve, maybe you can help answer this question. When I saw that the county, the commission have announced that as of May first, they're going to be relaxing a lot of the, the, I don't know what you would call it, just the requirements for separation and and going out. Does that, would that mean that it would allow public meetings to convene again, or do you?
So we had a meeting with Brian Hatch and I attended that yesterday. I was in the back outside all the cameras. And so from what I'm understanding is it's going to be phased in. So they're giving you several phases to this. They're going to see how it goes until the fifteenth of May, and then they'll probably open it up to meetings over fifty, over ten people. And then, I mean, this is a phased approach. So I mean, I think we're, I think we're wise to probably follow that guidance, but I think, you know, moving forward, the the health department director and the health department are taking a cautious approach. As I think their their public opinion and other things are guiding them that way, as is the data. I mean, we're still in that phase where we plateaued. They think we plateaued about a week ago, based on the data, and so they don't want to reinfect people. So I mean, it's just, this is just a move to start getting businesses open, getting people ready for that main first date, and then reassess in the fifteenth, and then reassess again around June first, and then see where, see where it goes. So I think my my gut feeling is we probably will not have an open meeting with live bodies together. And if we do, it may be just us still broadcasting from from being able to do it, but still have the public coming in on on broadcasting on YouTube like the commission now. So that's my guess is that it'll be a more phased approach.
Okay, so very likely with our next meeting, May fourteenth, we'll probably do very similar to this still, or still use the Zoom format.
Correct.
Okay, all right, Lyle.
Yeah, unless there's other correspondence or reports from the commission, just a brief update on our general plan process. I spoke with our consultants today. They, we're hoping to be here actually today doing some site work, but they'll be out early next week. And we suspect that I think the first week of May, they're hoping to reach out to the steering committee, whatever we decided to call that group, to begin to kind of kick off with them. And probably a week or so after, so early mid-May, get the public involved. I I think you know, it'll be a little unique. We'll probably be meeting in a similar format with them and try to do a lot of remote type engagement, involvement, surveys and information through the web and so forth. But that is something that they're getting close to being ready to get that involvement on as they've more or less wrapping, they're wrapping up the data collection that they've had and creating some of the groundwork to then build everything on. Get comments on. So something to look forward to. So yeah, with that, unless there's other direction from the commission that you'd like to give us at this time, that's our quick report.
That sounds great. You know, as far as any other trainings or things that we usually talk about, given our current environment, there just ain't that much going on. So I guess we continue to view this as kind of a vacation in some ways. Any other, any comments from any of the commissioners? Anything that any of you would like to bring up? Okay, well, with that, Lyle, anything else? It's kind of the parting words here.
I think that's enough said for me tonight.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Jared are always, you know, they got a competition going tonight. We'll take Jared's second for that. And with that, then we will stand adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody. And it looks like we'll see you on the fourteenth of May again, if we don't see you at something else before then.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good job, Kyle.